All right, that gets us down to departmental. It's an interim urgency ordinance declaring a temporary moratorium on the cultivation of industrial hemp. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, that'll be my presentation. Can we get the PowerPoint up? Thank you. So, this is going to be a presentation with respect to a temporary, proposed temporary moratorium on the cultivation of industrial hemp. And in summary, to give you an overview of what is being presented this evening, we're asking you to consider a proposed interim urgency ordinance which would establish a 45-day moratorium on industrial hemp cultivation and related activities. It probably is best that we understand what industrial hemp is. It's a term that is defined in the Health and Safety Code. It's up on the board. I'm not going to read the whole definition because you can see it there. It's also in the agenda report. So, the basic point of the definition would be the language with respect to the, I'm not going to try and pronounce that word, I'll just call it THC. It's no more than 3/10ths of 1% of THC, which is the chemical that is found in marijuana. So, by definition, if the plant has less than 3/10ths of 1% of THC rather than being cannabis, it would be considered industrial hemp. If it's more than that, then it would be considered to be cannabis. So, a little bit of a history here. On November 8th of 2016, the voters passed what is known as Proposition 64 with respect to the adult use of marijuana, which legalized the recreational use of marijuana. It's also sometimes referred to and also allowed commercial marijuana activities associated with marijuana. However, it did give the cities certain control over commercial cannabis activities. Then, in response to Proposition 64, the city adopted ordinance number 1142 with respect to including zoning regulations. What we did in that ordinance was to incorporate state law definitions relating to cannabis. I would point out that cannabis definition exempted industrial hemp from the definition. As a result of that fact, industrial hemp was not subject to the cannabis regulations that were set forth in Ordinance 1146. So, what was industrial hemp governed by if it wasn't by the Ordinance 1146? The answer to that is it was the Camarillo Municipal Code Section 9.12.021H1, which prohibited the use of land, buildings, and structures that are related to the unlawful possession or use of any substance that is declared or defined by state or federal law to be a controlled substance. So, at that time, industrial hemp was considered to be a federally controlled substance. However, that has now changed. The change agent for that was what's called the 2008 Farm Bill, a federal law. And what that did was find that industrial hemp is no longer a federally controlled substance. I would also point out that industrial hemp products may be used as a food additive or supplement subject to FDA approval. So, to follow the chain of events here, the industrial hemp was covered by our ordinance and our codes, but since the federal law removed industrial hemp from being a federally controlled substance, that was no longer within those code sections. So, as a result of the changing federal regulations and the state law exemption from treating industrial hemp as cannabis, the city's existing regulations do need to be revised. Industrial hemp is similar to cannabis with respect to some of the concerns associated with the plants in terms of odor, processing safety, manufacturing impacts. And I would mention to you that because of those concerns, there are other jurisdictions which have adopted moratoriums. Two examples which we can point to are the County of San Luis Obispo and the City of Thousand Oaks, which have recently declared their own moratoriums to further study the issues presented by industrial hemp. So, the proposed moratorium that is in your packet would allow the city to maintain the status quo while the city studies the issues related to industrial hemp so it may properly develop regulations that address those issues, similar to what San Luis Obispo and Thousand Oaks are doing. There are existing grows of industrial hemp in the county adjacent to city limits. We're going to see an aerial photo in a few minutes that is going to provide a visual on that. In addition to the grows that are in the county, there's also one existing grow of industrial hemp that's within the city limits. It's located north of the Pleasant Valley Road and west of the International Paper Plant. I would also point out that all cultivation of industrial hemp in the county is permitted under the authority of the County Agricultural Commissioner, who I understand is in the audience this evening and will be available to address the council. So, here's the aerial that I promised. And I'm now, since Michelle Deanna is the one who did the research and helped prepare this slide, ask her to explain what we have.
Thank you, Mr. Perick. So, this slide was prepared using information that the city received from the Ventura County Office of the Agricultural Commissioner. This is not drawn to scale. It's just meant to give your council an idea of where the industrial hemp permits have been issued in Camarillo and in the vicinity, to our knowledge. So, this shows the central and western portion of our city. The city limit has a red dashed line on the image. And the yellow boxes that you see on the image indicate two large areas that are currently under industrial hemp cultivation just outside of Camarillo city limits. There's a blue square that represents the only registered grow within city limits. This is located at 325 Southfield Road, and it's approximately 18 acres. For the parcel within our city limits that is shown on this map with the diagonal yellow and black lines, we did confirm that this is in fact not industrial hemp. So, the blue area up on this image is the only area within our city limits that has a registration permit to grow industrial hemp, and no other permits have been issued within city limits, and none are pending. And as Mr. Perick stated, we do have Deputy Agricultural Commissioner Andy Calderwood here with us this evening, and he has some more detailed information from his department that he will share with you. And he's available to address your council after the city council concludes his presentation.
Yes, thank you, Michelle. Andy, just one minute. We'll have you up here in just a second. So, the proposed moratorium is pursuant to Government Code Section 65858. It would authorize the city council upon a four-fifths vote, a vote of three is insufficient, it takes four votes, to adopt the interim urgency ordinance to declare a moratorium on any uses that may be in conflict with the contemplated general plan, specific plan, or zoning proposal that the council is considering or studying or intends to study within a reasonable period of time. Then, in terms of how long the interim ordinance is in effect, the answer is if you adopt it tonight, it'll be in effect for 45 days from tonight. Then, sometime prior to that 45 days, it's possible for us to return to you and request a further extension of up to 10 and 1/2 months. So, that gives you a year, a month and 1/2, and 10 and 1/2 gives you a year at that point. And then, prior to the expiration of the one-year period, if there is still a need for further study, we could return to you at that time and add another year to the ordinance to give you a total of two years. So, the adoption of the interim ordinance is necessary to give the city the time to study land use regulations that are related to industrial hemp-related activities such as cultivation, processing, drying, storing, and manufacturing, while the city considers appropriate regulations for industrial hemp. So, the suggested action tonight is to request a reading of the title and to then wait for the reading and adopt. This is the question slide, but before we get to questions, what I'd like to do is have the commissioner address the council. And we do have a slide that I believe he may be able to reference as well. It looks like it's a larger image than what you saw in the prior one. So, Commissioner, if you could speak to the issue?
Yeah, first of all, I'm not the commissioner himself. I'm a representative. I'm Deputy Ag Commissioner, and I'm in charge of the agricultural, I mean, the industrial hemp program. So, the slide here just shows hemp plantings that we have registered under our program. We register hemp growers. We have to vet them to see that they're growing industrial hemp, low THC product. They have to give us certificates of analysis and tell us where they got the seeds from. Most got them from participants in other states' pilot programs, typically Colorado, Oregon, Nevada, but other states as well. So, you can see on the map here that kind of that fuzzy area in the middle, it's Camarillo. And then, to the northwest, there's a piece out there on Central, a couple pieces actually, a small and a large one. On your map, you had the piece kind of west of the airport there, and that's illustrated. It's a bit smaller than was shown on the map. And then, one of the largest pieces is just south of Pleasant Valley, near the bottom. There you go. That one's about 180. And then, all of that stuff together there is about 250 acres in that piece there. And then, a small piece just north of that is the only one in any city, in any city limit in Ventura County, is that one piece right there, that 18 acres or so. And then, there's another one over by the, kind of at the foot of the Conejo grade in the far right of the picture. There's a planting there, and that's also immediately adjacent to the city limits. And then, there are a few small bits up in the Somas area, to the, yeah, the northeast of the map. In total, we have about 40 registrants with the county, and about 3,600 acres are planted this year.
Why don't you just hang there for just a second, and we'll go back to that slide. And I'll ask if there's any questions that the council has either of me or, I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Andy Calderwood.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we've got some questions, so we'll start it off with Ms. Craven.
My question. My question's for the city attorney. If we were to adopt the ordinance, what happens with the parcel that is within the city that's currently under cultivation?
It would be able to remain as a non-conforming use for the current grow.
Thank you.
Ms. Santangelo?
Okay, I have a number of questions, probably for both of you. First of all, what's the crop cycle for industrial hemp?
It's an annual crop. Depends on which variety. There's a plant called auto flower that takes about two months to mature. Kind of the traditional hemp planting would be done in, say, late spring and go for about three months or so. So, you know, it's going to depend on weather conditions exactly when that ripens, but it's an annual crop grown in the summertime.
So, it's one time a year? So, it's not like?
You can, people are planting this year. That would be the auto flower, the short-duration variety. If you have a greenhouse and you can keep it warm and use lights, you can grow it year round. And some people are talking about possibly in our climate getting four cycles in a year in a greenhouse.
That would cut down on the smell, probably?
It depends, yeah. I think, you know, you'd probably have to do some air filtration to maximize the mitigation.
Is there a difference in smell between marijuana and hemp?
There's a difference in smell among the hundreds of varieties, thousands of varieties. It depends on the combination of terpenes and other things that are emitted by the plant. There are varieties that are smellier than others.
But, so, a resident, though, living in central Camarillo wouldn't be able to say, "Oh, I smell marijuana." No, that's hemp.
To my nose, it smells very similar. To people with more experience with pot might.
How long do permits last?
We issue them for one year.
One year?
12 months from the date of issuance.
And you regulate, or you are certain that they are industrial hemp because they do the testing and then turn that over to you, the results?
Well, they have, they choose a lab. The lab has to be an accredited lab. So, there, you know, international organizations that accredit labs that can do this kind of testing. So, a lab has to, you know, has to show its operation to the accrediting organization and has to be accredited for this particular test. And so, then, what we've been doing is supervising the sample-taking. The CDFA regulations lay out a sampling protocol, and so, we're accompanying the labs as their samplers take these samples to make sure they're adhering to the protocol.
Chain of custody. Are there any labs in Ventura County?
There's one in Oxnard and one just west of Santa Paula.
With the permitting, is there required signage that says that this is no THC here?
There is signage. It just has to identify it as industrial hemp.
Okay.
You know, you've seen signs that say no THC and that sort of, that's not a required thing. It doesn't really say much about what needs to be on the sign, just that the fields have to be identified. There's no clandestine growing of industrial hemp allowed.
Okay, my question's for Mr. Perick. If the council voted for a moratorium tonight, in order to extend that, how many votes is that?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. I can go get my book. It may be a majority. I think the reason for it's four fifths is because it's coming back as an urgency. But I'll tell you what, I'll look it up on my phone, and I'll have an answer for you by the end of this presentation.
Okay. And I guess I want more specifics about what this time, I can't remember which slide it was, but the time is needed to address specific safety issues? And I'm wondering specifically what those safety issues are and specific production issues? I'm also wondering specifically, that doesn't, I'm not sure what that exactly means.
So, I think this might be the slide you're referring to. With respect to, we referenced odor as being one of the issues. There have been complaints that the city has received with respect to the odor that's generated from the hemp plants, processing safety and manufacturing use impacts. Those may include issues with respect to, as if it were, similar to cannabis, except for its hemp, but nonetheless, there could be similar issues that are related to them. I mean, the only difference between the two is the level of the THC content. Hemp is still a somewhat valuable product, so there could be some issues that would arise similar to with cannabis grows. But, the whole point of the moratorium is to be able to study this, to see whether or not that is an issue that would warrant either allowing the ordinance to expire without taking any action, or if it's not an issue, or if it is an issue, then to craft an ordinance that would address it.
So, the safety issues are about robbery, that, or is there something about the industrial process? That's what I'm trying to?
Yeah, my understanding is that the safety issue would be related, similar to with the marijuana grow, with respect to potential criminal activity.
So, that's the same idea about the production issues?
Yes.
I forgot your name. I'm sorry.
Andy.
Andy. Do you, are you aware of other, or ways to contain the smell? I've done some reading, and I've heard something about air scrubbers, but that they're not really worth it. But that some people use something like vapor shields, like what they do in garbage dumps to help?
You know, I'll have to say, I'm not a very expert on that at all. I can't really weigh in much. I know that, like, a carbon filter, you know, like, sort of a standard carbon molecule filter has been used in greenhouses. It seems that would work. Might clog quickly, I don't know.
Hard to do outside, though?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so, you're not aware, or it's not part of your?
Not aware of something that would work outside. That would surprise me, but there might be something, I don't know.
Or that's being used in any of those areas?
I don't know that anybody's using any, apart from growing it in a greenhouse, which is a small minority of our grows. Most of the greenhouse growing is people growing transplants ready for the field. There aren't many acres that are in greenhouses in our county. There's some, but most of that 3,600 acres is out in open fields.
Thank you.
I do have an answer to your question about the four-fifths vote, and the answer is yes, to extend it requires a four-fifths vote.
Thanks.
Mr. Trembein?
Thanks, Mr. Calderwood. I've got, thanks for being here, I appreciate it. I've got a number of questions for you. So, if I understand your answer correctly, the time duration on a crop cycle, I think you gave the minimum amount of time for the auto flower, about two months, but it could all, it's anywhere between two to three months, right?
Yeah, I mean, all of this is going to vary on, you know, what kind of weather you're getting, how much sun is there, you know, how many degree days, that sort of thing. It's a living crop, so it's going to vary from crop to crop, from variety to variety.
And typically speaking, the harvesting of the crop takes about how long, and the drying of the crop takes about how long?
That depends on what harvesting you're doing. There are different things. Some people are cutting off buds to dry them for smokeables. That's one of the things that growers have talked about doing. And then, following through, cutting the entire crop down to render the CBD oil from it. And if you've got a combine, which is the desired way to go, I'm told you can, with one combine, you can do about five acres an hour, something like that. It can take, there's one person who has a big field in Kamulos area, out past Piru, and it's over 200 acres, and he thinks that'll take well over a month for him to harvest with, you know, labor crews. So, he's doing it by hand with loppers because he can't get his hands on the equipment to mechanically harvest. And probably, I would say, at least half of our acreage somewhere in there is going to be hand harvested this year. I think it's only the biggest guy has a combine. I'm not sure of that right now. But half of our acres approximately are grown by one registrant.
Half of the 3,600?
Yeah.
Okay. When do the odor issues arise in the processes? Is it both with respect to the harvesting as well as the drying?
You know, this is our first crop, so I don't have a ton of information on that. The odor picks up in the field as the crop matures, as it's deposited on the flower. So, before there are any flowers, there isn't really any odor. And then, as the flowers come out and they get more dense and more resin is deposited, the odor gets stronger and stronger up until harvest. And then, I would imagine the activity of harvesting itself would stir up additional odors.
So, the durational aspect of that, when you look at a two-month crop cycle, is about how long? What do you think?
Well, there's probably something, for a two-month cycle, I don't know, the auto flower produces flowers pretty fast. So, there's probably, regardless which hemp you're growing, you're looking at maybe a month or so of odor when it's in the field. Some hemp growers might be able to refine that number. So, something like a month in the field, it'll have a strong smell. And then, you know, as to drying, I think it gets less smelly the more it dries.
Well, I read in the newspaper, for example, that, I think there's a quote either attributable to you or to your office, that the durational aspect of the odors is about two weeks. And I was just trying to think about that anecdotally based on experience here in town and from what people have said. And I'm just trying to figure out, is it, you know, is it two weeks, three weeks, four weeks? I'm kind of focused on the durational.
Well, it's not really something that starts abruptly, you know. As the flowers start to emerge in the field, it will start to have an odor, and that'll get stronger and stronger. So, it's a continuum. There isn't really a start point.
Okay. And from a crop cycle standpoint, I think you mentioned, you basically mentioned one cycle, you know, beginning in the summer. But, from a soil nutrient standpoint, my understanding is that industrial hemp is either carbon neutral or carbon positive. In other words, it's putting more nutrients back in the soil than extracting from it during the season. Is that correct?
Well, there are nutrients put back in the soil. I'm not expert on these things. It's also very good at pulling some things out of the soil, toxins, heavy metals. It's considered a plant that you can use to cleanse soil. But it is considered a good rotational crop. It does, if you were to, like, till in parts of it, you know, that are left, it would improve the nutrients in the soil. But I think you want to talk to hemp growers to get more, more expert answers on these particulars.
Yeah, well, and thanks for being here tonight because you're our hemp expert for tonight. But from a, and the reason I ask that is from a rotational crop standpoint, given how good our soil is here and on the Oxnard Plain generally, you see situations where there are multiple crop rotations each year. So, is it possible that this is the type of crop that could be, in an outdoor scenario, rotated multiple times during a calendar year? Not just once, but three or four? I'm just trying to make sure I understand. And on an outdoor grow, you could rotate it three to four times?
I don't think so. I think outdoors maybe twice with a spring planting and late summer to early fall harvest, and then, you could maybe do an auto flower planting in the fall. I'm told this plant does not do well outside in the winter. So, if you had a planting, you know, late fall or early winter, that crop just wouldn't do well.
Okay. And based on my reading, the typical volume is about 250,000 to 500,000 plants per acre? Does that sound about right? I'm going off of some Colorado statistics that I've read, and I'm just curious whether or not that would be the case for here.
You know, I don't have the number off the top of my head. It depends on whether you, were those numbers regarding CBD extraction?
Yes.
Okay, so, if that's what that is, then they would be the same here. I mean, they're planting it in that fashion. You'd have much greater densities if you're doing what they do in Canada, which is growing hemp for grain, where you have it essentially broadcast over the entire field at many times that density.
Okay. And I also understand, based on my reading, that it can grow anywhere between 10 to 14 feet in height.
That's, that would be more the fiber plant. The varieties used for fiber get tall like that. The CBD and marijuana varieties do not.
Okay.
Most of the fields out there that they're harvesting have plants that are four, five, maybe six feet tall. But six feet would be an above-average plant out there. So, that really tall stuff is a fiber crop.
Okay. Ms. Santangelo kind of asked you a couple of questions about air filtration and greenhouses. And I'm just really curious, what's the state of the industry right now in terms of, I know we have the majority of the grow here in the county, and those 3,600 acres is outdoor, right? Very limited, if any, on indoor?
There is some, but most of it's outdoor.
But what is the, what in your experience as the ag commissioner, deputy ag commissioner, is that transforming into more of a green, into more greenhouses? Or is it still continued to be an outdoor grow?
I think, I think the greenhouse grows are people using existing greenhouses. They aren't putting up new houses to grow hemp, if that was your question.
Okay, well, what I'm ultimately getting to here, my ulterior motive, is in talking about air filtration and the efficacy of air filtration, and whether or not that may be the trend of the industry, given the odor issues, whether or not to go to greenhouse and whether, and are you experiencing any of that discussion at the county level?
Not right now. We are going to, we're going to have a bunch of the growers convene in a sort of a task force, with the idea being that the people with hemp expertise could brainstorm solutions to, this would be the biggest problem. There are other issues with pollen contamination. It's a wind-pollinated crop, and if people aren't controlling pollen production, it can damage other people's operations. So, there are other issues that this group would be tasked with tackling, and the idea is that they can come up with. And the idea is that they can come up with some solutions, which then could help inform information that we give in this sort of setting, so that decision-makers can get, we can have this group say, this is what we think would work to mitigate the odors. This is something we could live with. And then they could pitch that to city councils, to the board, and...
Okay.
You know, you'd have that information at least.
Okay. Are you familiar with the cannabis grows, for example, in Carpinteria in Santa Barbara County?
I'm aware of it. I actually haven't interacted too much with those folks.
My understanding is that in Carpinteria, for example, the folks who ordinarily would be doing the pest control spraying for avocados, which is a large industry there, they have pulled out because of fear of legal action by the cannabis greenhouse operators, who would say, any spray, any drift spray from the pest control spray is drifting over to the cannabis because of its regulations could hurt it. What, if any, thing is sprayed on industrial hemp?
Well, there are, I think, about 19 products that are actually labeled for industrial hemp. I think most of those are bacterial. Bacillus thuringiensis is a bacterium that has, it's very virulent as an insect killer, but it's harmless to people. It's been widely used for decades for insect control. And so that's, there are a number of products that have strains of that bacterium and others. Because it's only become legal in 2018, it was illegal prior to that. The people who set up the tolerances, so that if you want to have a pesticide to be legally used on a plant, you have to establish a tolerance. And US EPA does that. So they haven't even begun looking into that until last November. So what that, and that process takes three, four, or five years. So the registrant of the pesticide has to submit studies, tests, and things to US EPA, and they evaluate those, and they decide, well, this is a tolerance that poses no health risk. And if we see levels below that on a crop, then that's legal. And so that's how you're allowed to spray things we eat with pesticides, because these tolerances are established. So none of those have been established for hemp.
For hemp. So we're still three to five years out...
Correct.
From EPA establishing tolerances.
Right. Now, the federal government, under federal law, there are materials that are of very low toxicity, things that would be like allowable as food additives, peppermint oil and things like that, that are exempt from the requirement for tolerances. So some of those pesticides have labels that are broad enough that say things like, permissible on outdoor plants such as, but not limited to. And then hemp could be used under those labels.
Okay, okay.
So there are a small subset of things. It would be like a subset of the organic materials would be allowable on industrial hemp currently.
Okay, now, thank you. And so what if any contaminants relative to spray out of the 19 would be on the state's red list or otherwise pose an issue?
None of those would be.
None of those would be, okay. So now, imagine yourself transplant the avocado grower. Let me do it this way. Has there been any discussion within your office about folks who are growing a different crop in an adjacent field?
Yeah.
Being afraid, let me just finish the question, sorry. I want to make sure I spit it out. About folks in an adjacent field, doesn't that be avocado, community kind of row crops, being afraid to spray those crops for fear of the drift contaminating the industrial hemp? Has there been any discussion on that level?
Yes, actually, we have.
Well, as there is, been in Carpinteria, for example.
Yeah, because of its proximity to Oxnard, a lot of the spraying in Carpinteria is done by Oxnard firms. So there are people we're used to dealing with, they've come to our office with this question. So it is an issue of concern. You know, what we told them, that there are a couple important differences. One is that this crop is worth maybe something like 10% what a marijuana is worth per acre. So in terms of the liability there, it's greatly reduced. So you're not talking about, you know, a damaged acre that's worth 600,000 is a bigger issue than a damaged acre that's worth 50,000.
But of course, in that situation, that's a risk judgment for the adjacent agricultural owner to make, correct?
Yes. And then in addition, under the cannabis program, the recreational pot program, there is a pesticide screen that's part of the program. So all cannabis harvested goes through a screen of pesticides. And that program does not exist for industrial hemp. Now, DPR does have a program, it's a produce residue sampling program, where they take several thousand samples from throughout the state. They pop into farmers' markets and retail situations, packing houses, any place they might find unprocessed produce. And they tend to target things where the risk of some sort of health damage is most acute. So like foods that's commonly used in school lunches and that sort of thing. So they have target lists, but then they have discretionary lists that's up to the whim of the inspector taking samples. And so they take random samples from all over the state. And if they find illegal residues, then they trace it back to the county of origin, and then we launch an investigation. And so it's possible that some hemp samples might be sampled by the Department of Pesticide Regulation under this program.
Right, so final question then. And DPR is the California Department of Pesticide Regulation, correct?
California Department of Pesticide Regulation.
And is that process by which DPR is evaluating this also integrated within the study process for the tolerances that you previously articulated by, I guess it would be EPA Region 9?
That would not play any role. It would be studies, people applying pesticides on experimental plots, seeing what the level of residue that results at various stages up to harvest, and then evaluating the toxicity of that residue on that plant, considering the use of the plant. So it's controlled studies of that sort that would be submitted to EPA to establish these tolerances. Now, they do have a program called Section 18 Emergency Exemption. And this allows pesticides to be applied to another crop off-label in an experimental, highly-controlled way. It's sort of an emergency resolution, sort of like what you're planning to adopt here, that allows for a new pest control option to be used. And that data is collected for this purpose as well.
Okay.
So.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for the information.
Mr. Moshe?
It's Mr. Calderwood, right?
Calderwood.
Calderwood, all right. Well, thank you for being here today. Thank you for being our resident hemp expert. A few questions, my colleagues kind of took most of them. I have some follow-ups off some of their questions. A lot of people have compared this to strawberries from an economic standpoint. Strawberries are, obviously, we grow more strawberries, and they constitute a greater value of all the crops that we export and or grow in Ventura County. A farmer can get approximately $60,000 to $70,000 per acre growing hemp versus about the $60,000 equal growing strawberries?
Depending on the market, they're said to be about equal in value, yeah.
But hemp uses significantly less water than strawberries?
It would use less water than strawberries, I'm told. Less water than a lot of the alternate crops that would be used, peppers, things like that. In part because those plants are grown, you know, many more plants to a row than the hemp. They're kind of spread out. They're rather bulky plants when they mature.
I think it was already mentioned, but most of the hemp that's being grown in Ventura County, and I think it also includes the hemp, the one parcel within our city limits, is being grown specifically for the use of CBD oil?
Well, that's what I was initially told. But cutting off the top buds and drying them for a smokeable product, which would be smokeable CBD, but it wouldn't be extracted purified CBD. I'm told that's what at least some of the growers are going to be doing. And so that's kind of like the first, sort of the prime harvest, and then they'll follow up with sort of a general harvest.
With the more, with the prevalence of CBD oil and hemp products in general, they seem to be becoming ever more popular amongst society. Do you see hemp being, I mean, growing in popularity? And do you think that barring any kind of moratorium on anything, whether it's either at a municipal level, city level, and or a county level, do you think there'll be greater prevalence year after year of hemp?
Well, I can't really speak to that. That's predicting the future. But certainly hemp is a product, a plant of many, many uses. It's an extremely interesting, I mean, the more I've been in charge of this program, the more I'm learning what a complex plant it is, and how interesting it is, and how interesting the characters are that grow it. And it, I mean, just the fiber uses alone, I think, are very interesting. I mean, they're using, they're making a plastic substitute with it. They're making something called hempcrete, which is a building material. It can be used for insulation in construction. It can, you know, you can make clothes out of it, paper out of it. It's a really interesting product. You know, I don't know if the fiber grow would be economically feasible here. You don't get as much if you just grow the fiber plant, anything close to what you'd get for CBD. But, you know, in Europe, they do a dual use. And that's actually, the biggest grower here is talking about doing that, where he would get the prime buds for drying, then run through, harvest the whole thing, and do an extraction without chipping up the plant, so retaining it as fiber, and then bundling that and selling it to somebody who wants to make fiber products out of it. And I'm told that's what they do in Europe. They run a combine across and kind of take the tops off. Somebody might correct me on this, but, and then come back later and cut off the lower parts for fiber. So it's, I think it's a potentially huge growing market, you know. I didn't know much about this a year ago, and I'm sure a lot of other Americans are in the same boat. And so I think that, you know, the potential for this to become an enormous market is there. But, you know, whether it'll work in Ventura, I couldn't predict. Some of the hemp growers say that this is a great climate for it. And we even had, the oldest book that we have in our dusty library is USDA agricultural report from 1863. And it talks about, among other things, whether hemp can be grown with free white labor. But it also talks about the fact that the hemp from France was considered superior to the hemp that was grown in Kentucky and other Appalachian states because of a cooler climate there. So there's something to having a kind of a moderate climate to growing good hemp. So it might not be that quality hemp can be grown everywhere. It might be the sort of crop that you would want this expensive Ventura County ground for.
It requires a lot less overhead to grow than...
Well, I thought that initially, but the fact that you can't apply most pesticides to it complicate that. You know, most growers will apply some sort of herbicide to keep their fields clean. And if you looked at these hemp fields, they're squeaky clean. There aren't weeds out there. And that's done with labor. You know, you can use chemicals and keep your acre weed-free for $350, or you can pay $1,200 to use a team of 20 people with hoes doing that. So if it's a high-value enough product, that makes sense. So.
On a net basis, do you think a farmer would yield a greater return on this?
I think it's too early to say. You know, I think the farmers are still learning that. I think after this first year, we'll have a lot of data on what's the cost per acre of this crop. You know, that's, it's too early to say in Ventura.
Mr. Trembley brought up the issue in regards to pesticides and drift from one crop to another adjacent crop. Does that same issue, is that same issue prevalent amongst excluding hemp, just crops in general, depending on what one farmer's growing versus what the other farmer in an adjacent lot is growing?
It is. You know, we get, you know, because we grow a lot of salad greens and things like that, things that the state tests in its residue sampling program, we get these cases, these residue cases, and we investigate them. And sometimes the cause of the residue is not a misapplication of pesticide directly to the crop, but drift from an adjacent crop. And we look for a gradient of concentration to confirm that. So that is a concern. It sometimes can, I mean, if there's an illegal residue on a crop, that crop has to be destroyed. It cannot carry, it's a crime to just have a crop in your possession that carries an illegal residue, even if it wasn't your fault that it was put on the plant. If we do find that that happened, though, then of course, we would find that the person who made the application nearby would be in violation of the law, and we would take enforcement action.
So that issue isn't exclusive to hemp?
It's not exclusive to hemp. It's, I'm not even sure it's more serious with hemp, just because I think that, because hemp isn't, I mean, you would smoke it perhaps, and it might end up in food, but it's not something where you're going to just take a branch of hemp and start biting on it. So it would probably be a lower interest target for DPR for residue sampling. They've discussed this, and it's certainly not going to be a target commodity in their residue program for the coming year. That could change, though. They're, you know, we don't really know. They might find out that some pesticides are concentrating in the oils or something, and they might want to take more samples. But currently, it's not a target commodity. So the chance of a grower having a small residue drift onto an adjacent field and having that happen to be tested by DPR and an investigation launched is, I think, relatively low right now. But, you know, what we've told people is, because of this issue, they still have the responsibility as an applicator of pesticides that there, it's not permissible for that application to drift off-target and cause damage. And an illegal residue on any crop is damage. And so we tell them to treat a neighboring hemp field as if it were kindergarten in session. So make sure the wind's going the other way. Make sure, you know, you might need to use hand spray or something, or a setback from the field where you don't treat it all, or treat with a much, with a milder chemical that would be permitted on the hemp, something like that. It's still the responsibility of the neighbor not to do damage to that hemp crop.
Any farmer wishing to grow hemp in Ventura County, whether it's in the county or whether it's in, say, within our municipal border, they have to go through the ag commissioner's office for a permit, is that correct?
Yes. It's a registration through the state, through the California Department of Food and Ag, but it's administered by the local ag commissioner's offices. So they come to us, they deliver their paperwork to us, they make out a check to the state.
Get there.
And then we submit that paperwork to the state so that they can have, you know, statewide databases of how many acres are being grown in various places and that sort of thing.
So I assume the one lot of 18 acres within our city limits has followed that process?
Correct.
Are you aware of any other farmer within our jurist, city's jurisdiction that has approached you and the ag commissioner's office and or filed paperwork with the intention of growing hemp?
No. When we found out from Thousand Oaks and Moore Park and stuff that there was concern in Camarillo, concern about grows within city limits, and talk of moratorium, I just instructed staff, if any application has a site in any city limit there, to come to me, and then we'll go to the city and see if that's all right with them. So, and we've been doing that for several weeks now. So anything new that come in would have come across my desk, and that hasn't happened. You know, as I said before, of the maybe 70-plus sites that we have in the county, only one is in any city limit.
And that one that is in our city limits is the only one that you are aware of, and the only one so far in the foreseeable future, to the extent that you guys can see it because of the process they have to go through?
Right.
It's the only one that is...
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're not going to permit one in Camarillo. Ojai has a moratorium, Thousand Oaks. I think Moore Park is considering it. So it's possible, Oxnard might greenlight it. So if we had somebody who wanted to grow within Oxnard city limits, then we would contact them and see if that's something they're fine with. And, but, you know, the truth is, Oxnard doesn't have a lot of farmland within the city limits. The city limits kind of tuck in tight around the buildings, and then the farmland is outside of the city limits.
Is there any chance that, because you had talked about different, there's different varieties of hemp grown for different purposes in different heights and thickness or densities and the like. Everyone here seems to be growing more or less the same variety with the same... variety with the same intention, more or less. Do, are there, your regulations and or lack of regulation, whatever you guys have in the county permits them to grow it, grow any variety for any purpose, as, as long as it's legal and, and under the state?
Yes. Currently there, we make no, we, we don't discriminate based on what sort of industrial hemp they want to grow. That is something that we will have to police because of the pollen issue ultimately.
And so I guess the reason that, that the variety grown throughout Ventura County is so similar is driven by just simple market economics then, I presume?
Yeah. That's, that's my assumption, that this is where, where they think they'll best monetize their acre.
Awesome. That, that is all the, Mr. Mayor, that's all the questions I have for him. I have a few questions for our city attorney.
Okay.
As well.
Why don't you go ahead and ask your questions with your attorney now?
Mr. Perick. I might only have one question for you. Oh, two questions for you. One, so what's being suggested to us is a temporary moratorium on, on the cultivation of industrial hemp within city limits, because that's all we have jurisdiction over, correct?
Yes.
Yep. And that's going to be for an initial 45-day term. At the end of those 45 days, then staff needs to come back to council and ask for an extension?
Yes. And that, and the first extension would be up to 10 and a half months. And based on the research I was able to do, that would be a four-fifths vote as well. And if it was going to get extended, as you can see from the slide, first one is 45, you could extend it for 10 and a half to get to a year, and then another one year to get to a total of two. Each of those extensions, the vote tonight and each of those extensions requires a four-fifths vote of the council.
But all we'd be voting on for tonight would be the 45-day?
Yes.
Do you, do you believe that, that the research and study that the, the staff needs to complete and or your office needs to complete, do you think that would be completed in 45 days? Is that reasonable?
That's hard to predict because we haven't started it. What we have done is become aware of concerns about industrial hemp and, and similar to what San Luis Obispo and Thousand Oaks apparently have the same concerns. I was unaware that Ojai had a, had a moratorium. So other communities in, in our area are concerned and because of that, and because of the complaints that the city had received, that's why this item's on your agenda tonight. I cannot predict if we will know within 45, if we will complete that study within 45 days or not. What we are required to do is come back to you. If, if there's going to be a request to extend it, we have to submit a report. I think it's 10 days before the requested extension to explain what work has been done to do the study. And at that point, you'd be able to evaluate and determine whether you felt there was a need for an, an extension.
Okay. It's my assumption that, that staff is still able to study even without, with the lack of a moratorium?
Well, certainly. The problem being that, I mean, the whole reason for a moratorium is to not allow others to, to plant industrial hemp and have the potential impacts that it would have. So that's the purpose of the moratorium is to give time, is to preserve the status quo and to allow time for the study.
Now, the word urgency is included in it. There's a sense of urgency. Where, where does, where do we draw the sense of urgency from? We have one grow, that grow, even with a moratorium, will be allowed to continue its grow until, until harvesting. And without the expectation, or as soon, as far as we know, without the notification that any, there won't be any additional grows, is there technically an urgency?
Well, we don't, we don't know that there's not going to be additional grows. There could be 10 requests for permits submitted tomorrow. All we know is that, that they don't currently have any on their desk, but that doesn't mean that they wouldn't receive some. And as I say, the, the whole purpose of the ordinance is to preserve the status quo, which would mean no further permits. And we don't know whether there would be requests for permits or not. With a moratorium, there could be a request for a permit, but they wouldn't be able to get, get it approved.
I'm going to bounce right back because your answer led me to another question from Mr. Calderwood. For, for farmers wishing to grow hemp, they have, we talked about they have, they have to fill out the form and pay the, the fee to the state and follow this process. From, from the time they initiate that process to the time they're able to plant, usually what, someone who's, who's kind of on, on the ball, what, what is that, what's the duration of that, of that period?
Oh, and on-the-ball guy might get it the same week.
Oh, okay.
Maybe if he did, yeah. If he's, if it's a simple thing, maybe he's got one site, one variety. His paperwork is straightforward. Yeah, that could be a quick turnaround. There've been some that have lingered for a month because they have confusing paperwork that doesn't add up. So we make it add up before we'll issue it.
That's reassuring. And I'll bounce right back. My last question for our city attorney. Do, I've seen a map, I've seen a map of, it's the state, all the state of California and all these different, both counties and municipalities, and all the, you know, different colors based on different kinds of either restrictions or moratoriums or the like that they've, they've each respectively passed or instituted. So there's been a lot of different municipalities, governments, jurisdictions who've done studies, just like the study that we're going to undertake right now. Do we have any reason to believe that ours is going to come to a conclusion about, I wrote it down, about the safety, about the odor, about the, the harvesting process that any of these other municipalities that have come before us and gone through this process have already concluded?
Well, I would say first that, that I've not reviewed the studies that these other agencies have done. And, but secondly, I would say that what I will, and I think that both myself and appropriate staff members could benefit by getting access to those studies, which I assume that we could do. Whether or not there was be a need for an additional study beyond what we find that's already been done, I, I can't predict because we, as I say, we're in the first inning here. And so there would be some amount of time necessary to determine what the information is that's out there for us to look at. And if there was a need to do any further drill down on that, we could do it. I think as we heard from, I'm just going to call you Andy because I can't remember your last name. So, you say it.
Calderwood.
Okay. So, based on Andy's comments, I, I think that there's different considerations based on different areas. He mentioned the Camarillo climate, for example. So maybe some of these studies that have been done in other parts of the state may or may not apply to Camarillo. And if there would be a need to do anything in particular with respect to specific analysis for the Camarillo community, we would have to look into that. I'm not suggesting that this is going to take years to do, but we need some time to, to, to do that analysis. And that's why we're recommending the moratorium.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. I do have some public comment cards.
I have a couple more questions.
Okay. Charlotte?
I want to go back to the, the climate here and your statement that it was a one-crop-a-year thing, maybe two. I can see where in Colorado, it would be a one-crop-a-year thing. I can see where in, in Oregon or parts of Oregon, it would be because their temperature's quite a bit cooler than ours. But I go back to thinking about strawberries in the very early 70s when they started, first started planting them in Ventura County. They were planted in February and started harvesting in April, May, depending on the year. And now they plant November. They're harvesting in February. They're still picking in, through July. It used to be the 4th of July, the, the stands closed down. They'd still be picking a little bit more. But it seems to me that with time, the, the crops are, the seed producers or the, the plant producers, whoever they are, adapt them in a way so that they will become year-round crops.
Well, I mean, that's possible. It is a sun-loving plant. It's a, it's a plant that likes to grow when it, when it's warm. Now, there is the autoflower variety that I talked about. It's called autoflower because traditional hemp produces those flowers where you get the resin only when the days start to shorten. And so it does have to take environmental cues from the season. So you couldn't plant it in, say, February because it would just sit there for seven months until it came, it, it got the cue for flowering to occur. So there wouldn't be any reason to have a plant just kind of sitting there doing nothing for month after month. So, but with the autoflower, that is one that, that flowers spontaneously, that doesn't need the day-length cues. I'm told it comes from like Siberia, from the far north, where they have, you know, like, summer is one big day.
July and winter.
Yes, exactly. And that probably is why it has such a short growth time as well. So, you know, it's entirely possible that varieties of, of autoflower could be developed that, that are okay with cool weather. And it seems like, you know, winters get warmer every year here, so there's that, too. You know, that's possible. I'm unaware of it. The hemp growers I talked to say this is not a plant unless you're growing it in a greenhouse and can have a considerably warmer climate for it. This is not a plant that, that thrives in, in cool, gray kind of conditions with a low sun.
Well, and our falls are often hotter. I mean, we haven't this year, but we have Octobers that are well into the hundreds.
Fall's a different story. I mean, you, people are planting right now. Not a lot of them, but there are a few people have just registered recently and are planting autoflower crops right now.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so I'm going to get to the public comment time if I would. First is Tiffany Lewis.
Thank you.
Andy. Again, if you could keep it to three minutes, Tiffany, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, council members, Mayor Keldy. First, I want to mention that I actually am of the second graduating class from Channel Island, so I know they all left. But 2004, I graduated from there. So not the class of three, but whatever came next. So I do live here in town. I grew up in Camarillo. I say I have dual citizenship between Camarillo and Ventura, both which are farming communities. So I'm used to all the different odors and smells. And I'm very lucky, I live towards the Somas end of town, so I get to smell cilantro and strawberries. Not so much the hemp smell, but I am on that end a lot. My daughter plays soccer. We can smell it, the soccer fields. But I do want to point out that though the odor definitely is bothering some folks, we do live in a farming community. And I would hope that the council would keep in mind that this is also possibly a very slippery slope for us. If we start saying the smell is bothering the citizens, and therefore we should consider a moratorium because of, odor was the number one, the first item, whether that not was on purpose, it was. The other items about the processing safety, these plants have been out there for maybe a few months now. I don't know that there's been any safety issues. I haven't heard of any. If we were going to have them, now would be the time because people think that they're marijuana. They're going to get smarter and then stop trying to steal them. So now is the time we would actually have those safety issues. People out there trying to steal the items, they're going to wise up, and those safety issues are going to diminish. So the pollen and what have you, I do have empathy for those who are having some new allergies because they're not used to that type of pollen. That will diminish with time, I'm sure, but I do want to say that I empathize with them. But the urgency ordinance for this, I would hope that you take that very seriously. Odor is not something we should consider for an emergency ordinance. Again, the plants have been here for now quite some time, so we would know if there was a safety issue. The odor is going to subside per the instruction that we received earlier. And it's only going to, we're only going to have this crop a few times a year. It's great for the environment. As an environmentalist, I really appreciate having something like this in my community. It gives back to the soil, gives nutrients, takes less water, great for the environment product-wise. So anyway, I hope you do consider not doing a moratorium, and thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have Brian Larson. Again, three minutes if you would, Brian. Appreciate it.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So one of the first things that I noticed about the, the moratorium is people are concerned about the odor. And I just have to say, for my opinion, I don't find that to be a compelling reason to enact a moratorium on this. For, that we're in a farming community, we have, like the previous lady said, lots of smells. I'm sure people have smelled the broccoli and the cabbage and the other things. Those certainly don't have pleasant smells, but we aren't considering moratoriums on cabbage and broccoli and the other crops either. As for the safety thing, I, I think I heard rumors, some public safety concerns about theft and that kind of thing. I, I don't find that to be a compelling argument either. And the reason is, people aren't going to be going out to the hemp fields trying to steal the buds to use, to, you know, to get high. And that, the reason is, the, this industrial hemp, as they said, has a 0.3% THC, which is a psychoactive component, whereas actual cannabis that's used for, for the, for, you know what I'm trying to say. It, it ranges between like 10 to 30%. So that's two orders of magnitude difference. So if you were going to go try to smoke the industrial hemp, nothing's going to happen unless you go out with the combine, harvest a huge quantity of it, and then you have to take it back and process it and distill it down to some concentrate, which just is not economically or logistically viable as a criminal enterprise. Furthermore, I, I have to take issue with, with the language of this being an urgency ordinance. I don't, I don't see how this would be considered urgent because, to echo what the previous lady said again, there's no known safety issues with this. There's no, no, no risk of it contaminating our water or air, aside from our, the odor, which I've already mentioned. With, with all the other surrounding cities kind of enacting their own moratoriums, I find this would be like a great opportunity for our city to put this as a green light and let our farmers kind of cash in on this, which would bring in a lot of revenue for them, which would translate to revenue for our city. I, I think that's a great opportunity that we should be taking advantage of. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Larson, are you a farmer?
No, I do not have any affiliation with the farming or agriculture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Brian Hope. Brian here. In three minutes, if you would, Brian, please. Thank you.
Mayor and council, my name is Brian Hope of Extractive Botanicals, and I oppose any moratorium on industrial hemp, whether temporary or permanent. Such a ban on a federally legal agricultural crop is un-American and further strains struggling farmers that can make a decent living farming this crop that was historically strong in this country. It's a crop that is typically grown without toxic chemicals, unlike strawberries, which are prevalent in this county. If odor is the issue, then perhaps there should be a moratorium on broccoli or garlic or onions or any other crop that may have odor. I see a day in the near future where all of the single-use petrochemical water bottles, like the ones in front of everyone here this evening, will be made from non-toxic biodegradable hemp plastics. Please consider being among the leaders in this expanding and inevitable industry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I'm sorry, Jim.
Mr. Hope?
She had a question.
I, I just wanted to ask you, are you a farmer?
I'm not.
You're not? Okay.
I know a lot about the farming of hemp.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next, I have Majeesh Towar. Majeesh. Again, three minutes if you would, please. Majeesh, thank you.
Thank you, mayor, and the council members here. So I do grow hemp, not in the state here, but outside of the state. But I live pretty close to here. And my interest in speaking here, I was looking to put a processing facility in the city of Camarillo. And I read the broad nature of this moratorium, which kind of concerned me. Should I be looking to some other city to put my, put my lab and processing facility? Now, looking at the, what is being presented here, we got 18 acres in the city limits. We have a crop that the next cycle will begin in six months. As a grower, I know it takes about 10 to 12 hours of sunlight for it to produce buds. So you have six months to figure it out. Why have an emergency declaration here? Why have an emergency declaration here, moratorium here, and have 45 days, the sky's not falling? I think we have time. Study it. I'm not saying there are no real issues, but you have time on your side. So please study it carefully. My last comment here is, you know, the city has been, I've lived here in the county for 30-plus years, and I've seen the city of Camarillo as being in the forefront of technology. You guys have done excellent jobs in bringing all the industry here that's very high-tech, and allow the labs that process with innovative technologies, bring it to the Camarillo, city of Camarillo, that'll bring quality jobs, an excellent hub of technology that can do good to humankind. So I'll encourage you not to adopt this moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Daniel, I believe it's Gabrie. Daniel? In three minutes, if you would, Daniel.
My name's Daniel Gabrie, and I live over there on Pleasant Valley Road, right across the street from the county. If I go out, I mean, I can literally go out there 200 feet, and I'm already in front of the, where they're planting there. But anyways, I hope the county follows as well to have a moratorium. I've lived there for 27 years, and I've never had such a bad smell till now. I know people talk about broccoli, cabbage, the cilantro, that smells great, the cilantro. But anyways, there's other kind of smells, but this is like, it almost smells like dog crap. And, you know, I shouldn't even have to tolerate this. I bought two new vehicles, one last year and one this year, and it already, I don't have that new car smell. It's a new hemp smell now. So, you know, and I could get stopped by the police, and I've never used drugs before, but they're going to think that, you know, that I was smoking marijuana or something. So anyways, I just, you know, there's other places where they can plant. I have nothing against it, but the smell is just terrible, and it lasts quite a while. You know, inside the house, it's, it's really bad. And what else? You know, and this is such a beautiful city. I love it a lot, and it's sort of like a black eye for the city. And, you know, it'd be nice for them to, you know, plant it somewhere else, that the smell is just extremely bad. And on that Nextdoor app, I know a lot of people were complaining, but I guess they're not here tonight. So I hope you guys consider on doing a moratorium, or, and, you know, it's, it's just extremely bad, the smell. So there's times that it's greater, and other times it's less during the day. It all depends how the weather is, so. Okay, well, that's about all I have to say. And then there are people talking about safety. The people are amazed about it, and they're videotaping even while they're driving it. I see, I live right in front of it, and they're really amazed. So that can cause an accident right there on Pleasant Valley Road. It's a dangerous road, very dangerous road. So, I mean, that's a whole other issue, but still, I mean, we don't need this. People are really amazed of it, to see it out there. So that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Olga Gabrie.
Yes, hi, Olga Gabrie. Daniel Gabrie's sister. When I come to visit him at his home, he's already stated he lives directly across the street from the hemp plants, and the smell is atrocious. And I was, I was really amazed that I went from his house to my house in Oxnard, and the smell of the hemp was still inside my car the following day and on my clothes. So people that say that, you know, the smell's not an issue, it's an issue. And I'm not opposed to the hemp, and I know the, you know, the purpose and what it can do for us, but I think the county in general needs to take in consideration what to do about the odor, because it is a problem. And it's not like, you know, broccoli or cauliflower or anything like that. Those, all those smells, they dismay after a while, but the hemp, it just really sticks, and it's just intrusive and harsh. So I would like to see a moratorium and study that. And also, I have a question. The parcel that is labeled "not industrial," what is that growing in that parcel if it's not industrial? Is that for recreational? And I think that one's in the city, if I'm not mistaken. Does anybody know?
Yeah, that is not a hemp crop. It's another agricultural crop, but we know that it's not hemp.
Okay, why was it mentioned?
Because we had, we had put out information earlier stating that it was being planted as industrial hemp, and that was a mistake that we needed to correct.
Okay. Anyways, I would like for the county in general to take a look at the odor issue. I think it is a huge issue. And some people who spoke here tonight are talking about it not being a crime or going to become anything with crimes. They don't know. They haven't read all the reports. They don't know how many officers are coming up and down Pleasant Valley now, you know, taking care of the area. People like, driving, like my brother said, with their cameras and stuff. There's been more accidents on Pleasant Valley, who knows why. So there's a lot of issues, I think, that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey Hughes.
My name is Corey Hughes. I'm executive director for Passit Fort. We're a nonprofit organization. We employ and educate students and communities on the benefits of industrial hemp. We would love to assist in the research of the study of the hemp program with your community, if we can help. I'd like to address two programs that we're working on currently in Ventura County. One would be a carbon sequestering program. In Ventura County, you're currently growing 4,000 acres of hemp. For every 2.5 acres, you can sequester 3, 13.5 tons. And currently, California is trading the carbon, there's carbon tax at $15 per ton. So we can, for every harvest, we can collect about $324,000 in tax revenue that no one's talking about, and California is in the carbon tax trading program. So Ventura County can play a big part in that and getting some money back. Another program we work on with the students and community people is a program with building materials. We are the company that's going around creating hempcrete structures for insulation. We have a job in a few weeks at North Ridge where we're doing, with the students at North Ridge School, we're doing an attic, re-insulating it. They have a DWP program. We're trying to show the benefits of how industrial hemp can bring down the energy efficiency opposed to other toxic materials, and you guys are going to be sitting on quite a bit of it. And even after it's extracted in the programs and put to the side as waste, it could still be turned into building materials that you guys could benefit off of. Usually, people would throw it in a dumpster because a lot of communities don't know about these programs, but we bring this education with what we bring to the students and communities. I'll leave my card or my information if you guys need any kind of help in what you're doing. We are a wealth of information.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes.
I have one quick question of the speaker. What organization did you say you were affiliated with?
Passit Fort.
Passit Fort?
Forward.
Oh, Passit Forward, okay.
You have a card, okay. Next is Bev Dransfield. Is it Bev? Oh, she is. All right, Bev, three minutes, if you would, Bev, please.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I won't take up too much of your time, as this has already been discussed at a length. One of the things I did want to bring up is the opportunity for more jobs with having this parcel, especially as mentioned by earlier in the presentation about how there will be more labor involved, especially due to the inability to use pesticide. And I bring this up because it reminds me of Lodi in, up north, and they have a cannery, and it smells really horrible. It's tomatoes, and it just makes me think that the community, while they are upset about, or concerned about the odor of it, there's the trade-off of them being able to employ several members of that community. And regarding the moratorium and the urgency of it, I believe based off the information provided tonight, that urgency has not been established, so I urge the council to oppose the moratorium. Thank you.
Next, we've got Nicole Becerra.
Good evening, and thank you for listening to me. I'm just going to echo everything that my predecessor, Bev, said that. I believe that there doesn't necessarily need to be a moratorium. I think that you guys can approach like this rational regulation, and I think the gentleman here, Corey, presented an amazing opportunity for you to embrace the people who are currently farming and actually be active, visit those farms, see what's going on, ask those questions, and see for yourselves firsthand what these farmers need, what those questions are, what it smells like for yourself. And also, just also mention, and I do believe that, yes, there are lots of different smells as a Ventura County resident around, but the benefits versus, versus the inconvenience. And, you know, I've lived off of Pleasant Valley, right across from Camarillo High School, and I've smelled, you know, manure and similar things to dog excrement myself, but, you know, like the people's been saying here, it's a farming community, and there's so much to learn from these farmers for yourselves, and I think it's an opportunity for Camarillo also to be a leader. I'm also a hopeful entrepreneur myself, interested in CBD business, and I think that's also something that is ancillary to what you guys discover and learn. How is it grown? How's it processed? Where can it be processed? What can it be turned into? Because I think that's only going to speak to more industry and more economic opportunity for Camarillo, as well as Camarillo hopeful business owners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else tonight? I have several yellow cards. I'll pass them out to the council. First is Movan Husss, H-U-S-S. There's no legitimate reason to keep farmers from raising hemp. There's Emma Jane Larson. Hemp can feed, clothe, and house, and alleviate pain. There's Margoe Van, I think it's, I don't know if it's Hess or Husss, but anyhow, H-U-S-S. I think this is unnecessary prejudice for hemp. We've got a Corey Dransfield. Corey says we should embrace new agricultural opportunities rather than holding out over minor NIMBY concerns. And we have Omar Sanchez. I personally know people streaming. I feel my home due, I want to free my home due to the odor. And with that, I'm going to pass all these out to the council members so they can read them. And again, I'll ask if anybody else wants to address the council on this issue, and if there's nobody coming forward. I do have a couple of questions, one's for the city attorney. So if, in fact, we do go forward with this, will it, do we have staff that can handle the inquiry on this, or will we have to get some professionals to come in, or how exactly will a potential study take place?
Well, I would work with Mr. Norman to evaluate what the best approach would be. One of the things that I think we heard earlier was that there's apparently already been some studies that have been done that are out there. I don't know what, for example, the county of San Luis Obispo has done in terms of reviewing this, and we know that Thousand Oaks has also imposed a moratorium, apparently Ohio has as well. So there may be others, but those are the ones that we're aware of. So we would probably start checking with them to see if they've done any studies or if they've accumulated any studies so that we could find what data is out there now, and then, as I mentioned before, to see what further study might be necessary with respect to Camarillo, which may be different than other communities. I mean, Camarillo is different than Simi Valley, which is different than, you know, other areas, so there may be some unique analysis that's necessary to drill down as to the issue in Camarillo as well.
Okay, great. And then I do have one other question for Andy, if you wouldn't mind coming up here again, Andy, I appreciate it. I just want to make sure that I heard right. Andy, you did say that there's several varieties of this, and to find out the one that works the best, I guess in your climate, I know the type of soil that you have makes a big difference in that, and obviously, how much sun. How do they find out which one would be the most beneficial for our particular environment that we live in here today? Is it trial and error? Are there studies that are going out there? And how many, do you know about how many different varieties there are in this?
Well, as far as how do they know that, I had heard from talking to growers that they were having trouble getting seed. To grow industrial hemp for CBD, you have to use, well, you don't have to, but if it's going to be economically viable, you want to use feminized seed, which is this sort of exotic process where you take the parent plants, you stimulate them with the chemical, there are several varieties that can use, and you cause the plant to go hermaphroditic, the female, and it'll produce flowers, which produce pollen, and then you take these stimulated plants and move them around in your field and, and then pollinate your field and produce a seed crop that are all female, so that all the plants that come from that seed crop are female plants. That's an expensive process. I'm told the seeds cost $1, $2 a seed, so it can be an expensive product to get hold of, and with, you know, with sort of the California Gold Rush, when the, when the regulations were adopted in April, there were a lot of growers scrambling to get seeds. And so I don't know how much evaluation there was of whether this or that seed was right for our climate. It was just, can I get some seed? And, you know, there are obviously different, different varieties in terms of their reputation for producing high levels of CBD and for having stable genetics. Some people got crops that had, you know, that have a very uniform look to them. All, you know, the plants are genetically similar. Other crops are very heterogeneous, skinny plants, fat plants, short plants, tall plants. So, you know, that's, that's what they call unstable genetics, that those seeds aren't really breeding true. So to answer your question, I'm not sure how much vetting went in to find seeds that were ideal for our climate. I think we're going to find out over the next few years by growing it in California exactly what seeds are best, and we're also going to be producing some. I mentioned people are growing a seed, I mean, a CBD crop here, but some people, a few of those growers, are also growing a seed crop for other people next year or themselves to grow CBD.
So we're in the early stages of all of this, in your opinion?
Yes. Yeah, I think we're going to learn a lot over the next couple of years about what the best varieties are, the low smell varieties, the high CBD varieties, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, are there any other questions of anybody? Okay, so why don't we start some of our discussion here amongst ourselves? Mr. Mosche, do you have something?
I'll, I'll go first. First of all, I want to, I want to thank everyone who came out tonight. I often, to myself, and sometimes say that I wish the community engaged with us more often, and it's good. Regardless of what side they take on an issue, it's really good to see engagement on issues and that people come out and they feel compelled to tell us what they think. So with that, I, you know, I asked online what people thought. I got over 200 responses. I've printed each one of those out. I've submitted it as public comment, so each of those people who responded online can be made of the public record, and my colleagues here could also get a copy of that in the event they didn't see it or they don't have Facebook. I got a lot of emails, I got a lot of phone calls, had people speak to me face-to-face when, when I was throughout the community. I don't like the smell of hemp. It irritates my nose, it offends my nose. Yeah, it smells kind of like skunk. I'm not particularly fond of it. We have a shop right off Constitution, so it's just adjacent. We have a shop right off Constitution, so it's just adjacent, they're near the corner of Lewis and Pleasant Valley. So we're kind of kitty corner to down Pleasant Valley where a lot of this hemp is being grown, in relation to the city. So when the wind is blowing right, you can smell it throughout our shop. We have all of our bay doors open, we have about 22 people working in our shop. And you smell it coming in. It permeates our showroom. I got to explain to our clients what that smell is, so that way they don't think we're smoking pot in the back because the smell is pretty identical. It's hard to differentiate. I know what the smell of pot smells like. It smells like that. So we usually have to explain it away. It's good talking, it's a good laughing point, and then we kind of just proceed from there. Years ago, we have this little field that's since run fallow because it was prime for development. I used to grow onions on that field. And the smell of the onions, man, that really, again, permeated our shop, went through, whiffed throughout our shop, went into our showroom. That smell too was offensive, kind of watered your eyes, particularly as they harvest those onions. Not much different in my book like the hemp. But we put up with it. We didn't, you know, we didn't cry about it. We let farmers do their thing. The intermittent offense to my nose doesn't supersede, shouldn't supersede, the farmer's right to farm and his right to earn a living. The fact that hemp doesn't use pesticides, uses less water, in maybe some cases, and we'll see how it bears out, it's possibly more economical for, economically viable for a lot of the farmers. And some of the strawberry farmers I've spoken to don't intend, they intended to use it as kind of just a rotation in between their regular row crops, like strawberries and whatnot. I've specifically talked to some strawberry farmers, and they said, oh, no, I'm just kind of taking up some time, two, three months, and I'm going to get back into my strawberries because that's what I know, that's what I really genuinely love. I understand the need for a moratorium or the ask for a moratorium to maintain the status quo, preserve the status quo. I don't disagree. I'm more interested in maintaining the status quo amongst the farming community, amongst our farmers and the remaining farmland, what little we have left, whether it be, well, at least that within our own city boundaries, because that is really all we have jurisdiction over. I sympathize with the gentleman who lives across from, from the, off Pleasant Valley, across all that. I don't like the smell either. What we do tonight, whether we enact a moratorium or not, that's, the vast majority of the smell you're getting is coming off the county, and they're a whole separate jurisdiction. They're going to have to go through their own motion if you ever wish for that to go away. The sense of urgency, I just simply don't see it. We have one lot of active grow, 18 acres, which we harvested here in the next month or two. And as of right now, there's nothing else on the horizon, at least as it pertains to within our city limits, which, again, which is all we have jurisdiction over. So maybe there's an urgency out in the county, but that same urgency doesn't, as far as I'm concerned, doesn't quite exist within our jurisdiction. I think we should study it. I think we should proceed with staff's recommendation that we look into what its effects are, whether it's be odor or safety and the like. Sure, just do our due diligence. I think that's responsible, I think that's important. I don't think we need to do it with a moratorium. I don't really, I don't see the benefit of that. Particularly going into winter, this is our, you know, we're going into our colder rainy season, and hemp is not accustomed to that. If we get a rainy season similar to what we've had last year, then I don't think the farmers are going to want to be planting that over the next, the course of the next three, four, or five months. So I would hope that that would buy us the time to do our respective study without having to put in a moratorium. Most the, like I said, I don't like the smell either. Most of the smell that we're getting, other than that little 18-acre field within our city limits, is all coming from the county. And it surrounds us on all sides, and we have, we have no jurisdiction over that, we have no say. Our hands are tied. For that, you need to go see your county supervisors. But within our city limits, I just don't see the need for a moratorium. I don't see the urgency for enacting a moratorium. And like I said, the intermittent offense to my nose shouldn't supersede a farmer's right to farm and grow a legal crop on his land and a crop that is kind of having its breakout moment in terms of its uses and its popularity and how people are gravitating. It's a very dynamic crop. So I, I'm not a, I don't, I don't benefit from it personally in any way. I don't use any hemp products. But I definitely see the value in it, and I see the economic benefit and the societal benefit to it. So let's study it, but I think a moratorium is just kind of unnecessary at this juncture.
Okay, so anyone else? Ms. Antangelo?
I'm probably going to be a little long-winded. I'm going to just kind of go through it as I went through it in my mind. I'm first going to talk about the pros of industrial hemp. And actually, before, I, one of the reasons I asked for the study on cannabis was because of what we're talking about right now. And I'm really glad to hear that somebody was thinking about using Camarillo as a place for processing and a lab, because that's exactly what I've been thinking about with our industrial space. And that's why I wanted a study session for us, so that we could talk about it and talk about not only cannabis, but also marijuana. But, you know, I know this is just the hemp, but I had wanted to explore the options of all of it from an economic point of view. A lot of the pros for industrial hemp have been already brought up. But I also wanted to point out to everybody that hemp used to be grown here in large amounts in America. And it was not until about, when it was classified as a narcotic, as a controlled substance in 1937, that all of a sudden, we couldn't grow it. And, you know, that's what we used back then for fabric, for twine, for paper. And so it's not that really hemp is new to America. Hemp has also been used, but we've had to import the seeds and the fibers from Canada mostly. So we're also, while we're learning more and more about its uses and how useful it is, it's not new to us, it's just that we've had to import it. So with removing it as a controlled substance, now we have the opportunity to use it more and not have to import the parts of it that we need. Already mentioned was the usefulness and crop rotation. One of the reasons that you don't need so much herbicides on it is because of the way it grows and the canopy that it creates as it grows. Weeds can't grow underneath it because sun doesn't get to it. So it's just naturally, by the nature of the plant, less chemicals are needed. It's environmentally friendly, it is, needs less water, and it was mentioned, and it can't be understated enough that it really does sequester carbon. And that is one of the most useful things right now in our state of climate for our environment. It also, there was just a study released that it attracts a whole bunch of bees. And I think, I hope everybody's aware that the bees in the country are actually decreasing in number, and we need bees to pollinate. So the idea that we have a crop that doesn't use as much water, that sequesters carbon, that is good for the soil, and that also helps attract bees, is a good thing. The uses, I've got some pictures here of homes that are being 3D printed out of hemp crepe. Really cool. The unique thing about the hemp fiber is that not only is it useful for textiles, paper, clothing, but it's more recyclable, recycle-able, because it's stronger. So you can recycle it more times than you can with just cotton. So that's also useful. The fiber can be used, the herds can be used, hemp seed, the oils, the CBD products, oils replacing palm oils in soap, in cream, in cosmetics. I have some numbers, but I'm not going to get into like the economics of it, but it's there. So now, let's talk about the smell. And the bottom line is that smell is subjective. So somebody could get up and say, this is the worst smell ever, it makes me nauseated, I can't stand it, it's worse than the cabbage and the broccoli. Well, I smell it differently. My senses are different. It's a subjective experience. So it's really difficult to legislate a smell. You can't quantify it. You can't really measure it. I actually think that the days of broccoli and cabbage are the worst in Camarillo. I know there are some people that have genetic differences, which affects how they appreciate cilantro. So some people think it tastes like soap, some people love it, right? Same thing with the smell. So I'm sure that the people who don't like the taste also don't like the smell of cilantro. I love it. So I have a really difficult time legislating based on something as subjective as smell. I work at Casa Pacifica on South Lewis, so I'm out there in the middle of the fields. I have to drive to Target about three times a week. And for the last two weeks, I have been driving purposely down Pleasant Valley. I literally had to roll my windows down and like stick my head out to smell it. So, you know, it's different for me, and I'm not denying anybody else's experience, that's your experience. It's just, we all experience it differently. The other thing that I noticed right away is that on the right side, city limits is one field, smaller, but on the left side, three or four, five times as big, is the county land. So let's just, let's just say that we tomorrow went out there and bulldozed and took all that out. It's not going to change the smell, it's right across the street. So then the question comes, all right, if we're going to do this because of smell, and we're going to take out everything within the city limits, what do we do about the stuff that's across the street from the city limits? Do we have a buffer zone? And how big should that buffer zone be? How should we decide that? Do we decide it based on how often the wind blows this way or that way? Or I just, I don't see any easy way to do this. One of the things that I hear most often as a council member is stop taking away our farms. Stop taking away our agriculture. Stop building houses. Yet, we're now hearing, you know, I can't stand the smell of what's growing in the fields. So I have trouble with that. This is an agricultural community. Some things smell, and some things smell badly. It's not that I don't emphasize, I just don't think that we can legislate on it. The safety, I, you know, avocados are worth a lot of money too, and I don't, and they are stolen a lot, but, you know, I don't, I'll be honest with you, I think most people that use recreational marijuana know what hemp is. I'm pretty sure they do. And they can also get it pretty easily. So I don't think, that's just my thoughts. So as far as the urgency, I don't see it. I don't think anybody's, I don't think we're going to have this huge planting of hemp in the next few months. I'm okay, you know, with the study going forward. I hope that, I hope that some of that, I know that the staff, and this is no commentary about them or the work, but, you know, the study that I'd asked, I hope that it's kind of incorporated all together. Why not? I think that's all I have to say, but I, I'm not prepared to support this.
Ms. Graven?
When I first moved to Camarillo, the worst smell here was, were the feedlots in Somas. And they smelled horrible, absolutely horrible. And the part of town I lived in, they really smelled bad almost all the time, but when the Santa Anas came, it was really bad all over town. And at that time, there were only a few houses in Mission Oaks. Most of Camarillo was west of Lewis Road. When the feedlots went, I think everybody sighed a sigh of relief. And they went because of economics, I think. They got a whole lot more land, money for selling the land for houses than they did from the feedlots. But I do understand about smells. And before I go any further, I want to make sure everybody understands what an urgency ordinance is. An urgency ordinance is an ordinance that's only good for 45 days, and it takes effect immediately. That's the legal definition of urgency with respect to this. If we wanted to do a regular ordinance, it would be good for the rest of our lives or until rescinded, but it would not take effect for 30 or 60 days or something after the second reading. So I think staff wanted to have it this way, with the short-term thing of a moratorium before they went to all the work of doing what is needed for a long-term ordinance with all the backup. So it isn't that there's an emergency, it's that it's a short term and it takes effect immediately. With that in mind, and with the smell, to me, it smells like a skunk. And I live at least a mile, maybe a mile and a half from where the map says anything has been grown. And I smell it at my house every night. And so do my neighbors. They're all asking me, how come there's so many skunks around? And I say, it isn't skunks. But anyway, I'm not sure they believe me either. At any rate, I can support an urgency ordinance to, and I recognize that I'm in the minority and this, with two council members saying they do not support it. I don't know what the other two say, that it will not pass, but I could support a short-term ordinance to give us time to find out more about it, even with understanding that the majority of this that's being grown right now is not within the city limits. There's a whole lot of land down there between north of Pleasant Valley, west of Lewis Industrial Park, and east of Las Poses, east of the airport, that's within the city limits, that could be planted. There's also all of the Cuyagus Creek land that could be planted. And so I think it's something we need to look at, we need to consider. And we have had nine speakers here tonight. One lives in Somas, one lives in Oxnard, one lives in Ojai. And so we have six people from Camarillo who gave us their opinions. But we have more than, almost 70,000 people that we haven't heard from, even with the 200 that responded to Mr. Molche's Facebook page and who sent us letters, emails. And so I never know who's the silent majority and who's the vocal minority. And I never know what the silent majority feels, but I do know that a lot of people, wherever I've been going lately, have asked me what the smell is. So I could support a short-term urgency ordinance that would give us time to get this sorted out.
Ms. Drenfield?
Well, it's probably not going to surprise anybody that I come at it from more of a legal side. And let me kind of frame the issue the way that... And let me kind of frame the issue the way that I see it. I see this as, if you will, a balancing act or balancing the equities. We've received a lot of input on both sides of the issue. I've received a lot of emails. A lot of people called me or orally asked me about it. And those conversations and those emails have been on both sides of the issue. So, you know, I really want to thank everybody for being here tonight and engaging in a civil discourse, because that's what this country needs more of. I had the chance to, I've had the chance to communicate with people whose views I respect on both sides. And there are legitimate views on both sides. I had a long conversation this morning with a resident, and we spoke for about half an hour, and I got to explore all sides of the issue. I will say that based on the communications that I've received, there are a substantial number of people who find the odor very offensive and have articulated to a great level of specificity the impact of that offensive odor on them. I think if you look at it in one context, you really have, you can frame the issue this way. It's the ability of farmers to grow what they desire and keep farming economical versus some pervasive odor issues which at certain times from this crop, whether it's once or twice, you know, however many, how many times it's grown per year, affects someone's peaceable enjoyment of their property. When you step back and you think about it, it's really, you're balancing one set of property rights for another set of property rights. And I think that's the way that I frame it in my own mind in looking at someone's property This is not a THC issue. It's not a cannabis issue. It's an odor issue. And I know that, you know, I think the, there was a comment earlier about, a comment earlier about legislating on odor issues. And I think, Ms. Santangelo, you made that comment about, basically about legislating on odor issues. And I want to say to you respectfully that the California Legislature has done that in the Civil Code when it's discussing nuisance issues. And among other things, the Legislature has said, "Well, anything," and this is subjective, granted, "anything which is injurious to health or offensive to the senses or an obstruction to the free use of property so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property." That's, that's, that's the definition of a nuisance. And a definition of a public nuisance is one which affects at the same time an entire community or neighborhood or any considerable number of people. So I, you know, based on my training, I go to those kinds of citations. And the Legislature's had no problem with doing that. Neither have the courts. I mean, there's a very, very well-known California Supreme Court case from the 1980s. And I'm just going to go to a quote in this case. "The intensity of the," quote, "the intensity of the odors found reflection in log notations ranging from smell to very bad to horrible. Even when classified as mere smell, plaintiff testified that the aroma was offensive enough to destroy the comfort and enjoyment of his home and property. At other times, it was about as much as a person could stand. You could not be in it too long. You'd have to go somewhere for relief. And physical reactions included burning of the eyes and nausea." So I look at that, and then I look at the communications that we've received, and a number of them from people who are in support of a moratorium talk about what they have experienced relative to these odor issues, you know, including nausea, including headaches, including leaving their home because of the smell. And, you know, I lived in Davis, I was lucky enough to live in Davis for nine years. I was, got very used to, and we've lived here for 36 years, I'm very used to what it's like to be in an ag environment. And I will tell you, I'm not aware, and this, again, smell is always subjective, right? But I'm not aware of other crops with a sustained odor issue like this one. I'm just not. Now, again, admittedly, that's subjective, but I'm not aware of them. And I think, more to the point, this is a tough decision to do. And I mean, I sense, I have two colleagues who are not in support of the moratorium. And I want to say, I don't take the decision lightly because it's a balancing act. You're balancing rights of property owners against one another. But on balance, in my personal view, I think the equities here, as of right now, favor the residential owners. That's my perspective. In favor of a moratorium. I don't see a harm in temporarily preserving the status quo. I think it's prudent to enact a temporary moratorium pending further study. I'll note from the staff report that the County of San Luis Obispo, which is a predominantly agricultural county, has also adapted a moratorium, adopted a moratorium. Well, what does the County of San Luis Obispo know that we don't know? So I can support, I can support a temporary moratorium that gives us the ability to study the issues. I wouldn't want a temporary moratorium to be of some indefinite duration. I mean, I know Mr. Pirik has already talked about the timelines here. So for those reasons, I would support a temporary moratorium as staff has recommended to us.
All right. So there's been a lot of discussion here tonight. I'm going to try to make my comments as brief as possible. My opinion is that this is our only opportunity here to have a discussion on this. My feeling is that this industry is going to grow by leaps and bounds, and if we wait two years to have a discussion on this, that it's going to be too late. This is the only opportunity that we're going to have to have a discussion on this. Yes, we're an agriculture community, but we're also a community of a whole lot more. We work very, very hard to have a thriving business community, to have a thriving residential community here and be a balanced community here. I'd like to talk to the residents. I'd also like to talk to the farmers. And I think most of you know here, I come from an agricultural background, have an uncle that owned a ranch in Somas, and I have cousins that still farm in Somas. And most of the farmers that I know are not only good stewards of the land, they want to make money, but that's not really why they're in farming. They have a lot of feeling, a lot of real spiritual feeling of land, if you can believe this. They really, really do. They want to do the right thing, especially Ventura County land. They have a love affair, most of them, with Ventura County land here. I'd like to have a conversation with them and see how they feel about this. I can remember when we were growing mostly a lot of lemons here, which lemons is still a major crop here, but I remember when the strawberry started getting more and more popular. You know, strawberry's an extremely expensive, you know, crop to grow. There's a lot of cost with strawberries, but farmers all talk to each other. It's very interesting how they all work here, this nexus with them. And they talk about what they're going to grow, and they say, "Well, I'm not going to grow that." And next year, they're all growing what they're talking about that they're going to grow. So the word of mouth is pretty extensive here. So, you know, I'm very much aware, I've got a lot of friends and family members that use products that have really helped them. I understand the medical benefits of this, and I also understand, like I said, that I think this is going to grow, there's a potential that this could grow very rapidly. But, you know, my colleagues, in my opinion here, just my opinion here, this is our only opportunity to have a conversation with this. If we don't do it now, we're never going to be able to do it. I understand that it's just within the city limits. You've got a whole cadre of acres outside of the city limits that this isn't going to affect. But if we don't do it now, we're not going to be able to do it in the future. Again, I just want to emphasize that this is going to grow, in my opinion, really, really rapidly here. And I would really, really strongly urge my colleagues to support this and have a discussion here. There is a limitation to how much and how long and the duration that we can discuss this here. But bring in everybody. Bring in residents, bring in farmers, bring in the agricultural commissioner, of course, bring in individuals that want to start businesses in this. Let's have a conversation with this. And this gives us an opportunity to do this. I've lived here, and I can remember when we had the BI company out there, and the smell was very odorous here. And this is. I mean, there is some smell. However, comma, there are some different varieties out there. We're in the MBO stages here. There may be some varieties out there that are less odorous. I don't know that. But I'm hoping if we approve this study, we can find out, and we can, we can know a whole lot more in the future than what we know right now. So I would strongly urge that we go forward with this. So with that, it is, unless anybody has any other comments, councillor, do you have any comments you'd want to make, or?
I have no further comments.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to request a reading of the title.
This is ordinance number 1168, an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Camarillo, California, declaring a temporary moratorium on the cultivation of industrial hemp.
I move to waive further reading and to adopt an urgency ordinance declaring a temporary moratorium pertaining to the cultivation of industrial hemp.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Okay, that passes 3-2. So councillor, do you want to?
No, that didn't pass because we need...
Well, it voted 3-2, so we need four, right?
The vote was 3-2. It had to be at least four, so the motion does not pass.
Okay, the motion doesn't pass. So with that, I'm going to call a five-minute recess, please.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to reconvene the council meeting. We'll get down to item B. It's a Camarillo Ranch Wedding and Special Event Management Services Agreement. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We need to get our administrative services director back from the break. So just a brief minute. There she is.
Members of the City Council, tonight's report is on wedding and special event management services at the Camarillo Ranch. And I just need to catch my breath here a second. So the city's Camarillo Ranch Operating Agreement Ad Hoc Committee has met with the foundation's task force now, as directed by the City Council on June 17th, which was the last time that we came to the City Council with the recommendation. And you... And you'll recall that at that meeting, that City Council meeting, the Camarillo Ranch Foundation Board President submitted a United Day Notice of Termination of the Current Operating Agreement. Subsequent discussions with the task force for a new lease agreement have been around a new operations model that focuses the foundation's efforts around the cultural, historical, and educational aspects of their work to preserve the legacy of the Adolfo Camarillo family and life in Camarillo in the early 1900s. The docents have been and continue to be a critical partner in this effort by providing school and private tours of the ranch and leading and participating in activities and events. And under this model, the foundation, under this current, this new model, the foundation will continue to provide community events. The foundation's revenue stream will be dependent on fundraising, grants, donations, and memberships. The city will be responsible for all maintenance of the property, utilities, and other property expenses. There are some minor exceptions that will be identified in the respective contracts with the foundation and Command Performance. The city had contemplated that in order to take on additional, the additional services and maintenance requirements, we would need the revenue from the commercial event management services that was originally intended to support the operations. So what are the steps towards the new business model? Since the CRF terminated, presented its termination notice to the current operating agreement, they have offered to extend the termination date to October 31st. And during this timeline, then, the city's had the opportunity to advertise for a request for proposals for wedding and special event management services at the Camarillo Ranch property. So advertisements began July 26th, so that's when they went out, with a due date of August 14th, 2019. Five proposals were received and reviewed by staff, and the rating was based on various criteria set forth in the RFP and scored based on a predetermined point system. Four proposals were invited for interviews, and these were the four proposals with the highest scores, with a large gap being between the top four and then the fifth. After the interviews and after the scoring and then the interviews, Command Performance was selected among the four. So under the proposed agreement, and listed here in summary on the slide, Command Performance is required to perform wedding and special event management services, provide catering and beverage services for a wide variety of dietary and culinary needs, and coordinate with the city and the foundation for their use of the ranch. The contract requires proper licensing and experience, such as business licenses, proper event permits when required, ABC licenses for alcohol, beverage, service, and of course, experience in that service is required. In addition, Command Performance provided an alternative proposal to monitor the property during its expected business hours of 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., seven days per week. The city's responsibilities then will provide grounds, landscaping, facility maintenance, and repairs, and the city will also continue to be responsible for ADA and capital improvements. The city will pay for all utilities, trash services, custodial, and alarm services. Again, these are in summary, and the details regarding the party's full responsibilities are in the agreement. So there's a whole lot there that you will find in the scope of services, but these are the major points. So looking at the revenue model and projected expenses, the current adopted budget for the Camarillo Ranch Facility Fund is $260,000. The added responsibilities adds approximately $160,000 for a total expected budget of approximately $420,000 annually. I just wanted to make sure to clarify that the budget is currently under review and will be brought to you at the next council meeting, but I use some projected expenses as a plug-in just to illustrate the revenue over expenses. So with a budget of the estimated $420,000 in mind, staff negotiated a contract with Command Performance to provide sufficient revenue that will cover the city's projected expenses, including setting aside funds for capital projects and ADA improvements. Big Page Three of the staff report provides more detail than the slide does on the detail of the revenue points, but I'll go over those verbally with you. The catering commission, it's a $20 per adult and $10 per child that the Command Performance would pay the city, which, this is a standard commission split in the market. So in other examples at other venues, you would see something like this. If there's a contract for a commission split, this would be in average. We would see this in other type of, in other agreements. The venue rental fee is 35% of all venue rental fees will be paid to the city. Buyout, a buyout is 50% of a buyout fee will be paid to the city, and a buyout fee is where there are no catering services provided by Command Performance. A buyout happens infrequently, and if you look at the line item, buyout ceremony fee, you'll see that it's a very low, it's just a low number, a low revenue number. One example of a buyout would be the Metal Arcs Taste of Camarillo event. So the Metal Arcs would have the venue one or two days. I'm not sure exactly how many days of the weekend, but one or two days. They don't use catering services. In fact, what they do is they allow vendors from the community, from all over, whether it be Ventura County or outside of the community, to come in. And these are beverage vendors, wines, for example, wineries come out, and so do a variety of restaurants and catering companies come out, and so they provide samples. And the Taste of Camarillo is a fundraising event for the Metal Arcs. Ceremony fees will be paid to the city at 50% of fee. There are occasions when a couple may not want to have a full-on catering event. They prefer to have a ceremony only at that beautiful background of the ranch house. So there is a lower fee for that instead of the larger fee for the full venue rental. So that ceremony fee at a lower rate, 50% of that will come to the city. And security fees will be paid to the city at 30% for those events that require security fees. Security fees listed in the agreement with Command Performance, or at least at the current rate list, are about $850. So the city would receive 30% of that fee. So the numbers here are an estimate of what this could look like on a going-forward basis, with some adjustments expected as we refine the numbers, the expense numbers, and provide you with a fiscal year 1920 proposed budget for the remaining eight months of the fiscal year. The number of annual events is a conservative number. In discussing this with Command Performance, they expect that events will increase, causing an increase of revenue to the city. But at the point of negotiation and review of the pro forma, they wanted to provide us with very conservative numbers. We do expect revenues to increase, and however, for the first 18 months, we do expect revenues to trend lower due to the revenue split of the venue rental fee between the foundation and Command Performance for events that were booked by the foundation but that are occurring after the termination date and serviced by Command Performance. So if the Camarillo Ranch Foundation booked an event, let's say today, for an event that happens in February, the foundation's agreement is terminated on October 31st. So they would keep 50% of the deposit or the venue rental fee. So they keep that 50%. Command Performance is, to service the ceremony or the event, I'm sorry, to service the event, will receive the other 50%. There is still work that needs to be done by the, by Command Performance, so they would keep that second 50%. All the other fees, the catering commission, security fees, for example, for those events would still be paid to the city in those amounts that I had listed in the report. So again, all these numbers will be further refined and brought to you at the next council meeting. I did want to let you know that CP, Command Performance, will be required to provide monthly financial reports with the revenue that is going to be submitted to the city, and parties will meet annually to discuss the final financial performance of the contract. So there's a benefit to definitely to Command Performance and absolutely to the city for us to have this partnership and to collaborate and coordinate and to discuss financials so that we know that this contract is working for both parties. So with an approved agreement, we'd like to include Command Performance in the transition plan. So if this agreement is approved tonight, we have a tentative meeting scheduled for tomorrow morning at 8:00, so that we can discuss, do a meeting greet, discuss the roles and responsibilities of the parties. So really start, you know, with hitting the ground running and having a really good understanding of who's who and what the expectations will be. Also, with this approved agreement, we'll establish a Camarillo Ranch Enterprise Fund to account for the revenues and expenses and transfer assets from the Camarillo Ranch Facilities Account, so our current adopted account, for council approval of the fiscal year 2019-20 Camarillo Ranch budget. And that's where we'll bring you the better refined numbers is on October 23rd. Also, the Ad Hoc Committee does meet also tomorrow with the task force, the foundation's task force, and we hope to present to you a new lease agreement with the Camarillo Ranch Foundation. We hope to bring that to you on October 23rd as well. You know, there were a few items that were left pending, but we're really hoping that we can work those out tomorrow. Whether or not that we bring that to the 23rd, it won't stop us from moving forward with that November 1st transition date with Command Performance and the event manager. We'll also bring to you on October 23rd in future meetings, present to you new contracts or amendments for maintenance and services at the ranch. So we've been working already with the Camarillo Ranch Foundation to understand their services that are provided, understand who their vendors are, use their vendors if we can, but under a new agreement with the city of Camarillo, of course, or amend our contracts with our vendors. For example, custodial services, amend that agreement to include the ranch property as one of the properties that would, the city would have the vendor conduct services. And all that will happen for, in preparation for November 1st, 2019 implementation. So at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Daniel Margolis. He's the owner/CEO of Command Performance, and I'd like for him to introduce himself and his team and answer your questions, and of course, staff is also available to answer questions.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
You can speak right into the microphone if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. I'm Danny Margolis. I'm the president of Command Performance. This is Kathy Russell. She's the CFO. And Nikki Keller, she's going to be the, our venue manager over at the ranch, which she currently is in that role, so it's going to be a nice, easy transition, hopefully.
Any questions or anything from...
Danny, do you mind giving just a quick rundown of Command Performance's history, some of your guys' credentials?
Sure, absolutely. Command Performance was started in about 1988. I came on with them about 1993. We're a smaller company that started out in Moore Park, slowly kind of built into the community. We started to pick up a lot of different venues, so we have the same model, about seven other venues throughout the county, and we have them all still to this day. Some of them go back almost 20 years. So we know it's a proven model. We know that we can take care of things. We do things for the Los Angeles Rams. We do things for the Grammys. We do things for a lot of LA clients as well. So we're pretty diverse in what we do. Therefore, having really diverse menus is really important to us, especially with, you know, the community itself.
You guys were also the exclusive caterer for the Reagan Presidential, Reagan Presidential Library.
You're correct, yeah. We were there for approximately 20 years, so it was a small part I missed.
Tell the way.
Basically, yeah, we were there for 20 years, kind of helping them with their services. They wanted to go ahead and build more of a new facility with a new kitchen, different things like that, and just, we weren't just in that position to do it. So they went with a larger, more $6 billion company that kind of took that over.
And then locally, I know you said at one point during our interview process that you were the caterer for Padre Sarah Parish here in Camarillo.
Correct.
And then when it comes to other wedding venues in the county, can you list off a few that you guys currently service or are the exclusive caterer for?
Absolutely, you're right. The Sarah Center, we do Harley Botanica, we have Marvia Gardens, we have Quail Ranch, we have Walnut Grove, we have Eden Gardens. I'm going to get in trouble if I miss somebody. But those are pretty much the popular ones in the area.
You have a lot of experience in this field.
Exactly.
All right, that's what I'm getting at.
So we do about 450 weddings a year, so weddings is what we do. I personally probably have done more than I could ever count, so we're definitely experienced in the field.
So you're familiar with the Camarillo Ranch Foundation. You're familiar with the property.
Yes.
And it's, so you guys have been catering out of that property for some time now.
Yeah, and we've been catering there forever. I mean, before the barn was there, we used to do things in the house all the time. I mean, I was just telling Nikki a story that the basements used to, where all the tables used to be, and we literally used to carry those out and put tables and chairs in the house and do small functions for either, you know, whether it be a corporate event or just a small wedding. So we've been involved with the ranch for way back, so.
So you understand the transition, not just on your side, but the transition as it pertains to the Camarillo Ranch Foundation and the house, and how this is all kind of changing, how the pieces are getting moved around?
Absolutely, and we're here to support the Camarillo Ranch Foundation and see whatever we can do to make them successful, because obviously their model's changing, so we're going to show them how to adapt, and Nikki's really going to be instrumental in making that happen.
And Nikki is quite an asset because of just the role she plays now out of the Camarillo Ranch Foundation. She knows it intimately, inside and out, and she knows the individuals and whatnot. Knowing that there's a transition occurring with the Camarillo Ranch Foundation, I know there's, and speaking to some of them, they've had some anxiety about this transition, what's going to happen after October 31st, particularly when it comes to staffing, when it comes to support services and whatnot. I think they're most concerned about just the last few events they have remaining this calendar year, particularly the three Santa's nights. Would you, I mean, in your commitment to work with them, help them through this transition, would you be willing to help assist them in coordinating, whether it's maybe lending Nikki to help through the rest of this calendar year?
Absolutely. I mean, Nikki and I have been speaking, and once we get together is to go to their meetings, show them the best way to do things, kind of save money, and just putting their resources where they need to as opposed to, because we're in the event industry, we know what to do, and if they bring us in on the meetings, we're there to help.
And as Carmen stated in her presentation, she said the numbers, as are presented here, particularly the top-line numbers, the number of events and the revenue derived from those anticipated events, you feel that's a conservative number? You feel like that's a target you can hit with?
Yeah, I'm pretty conservative in our business, so I wanted to kind of portray that, what we were showing. The, one of the largest advantages that the Camarillo Ranch has is that they have an indoor venue. All the venues that I mentioned are all completely outdoors, so they have, so there's, you can access events January, February, March, and November, December, when other venues are a little more questionable, you're going to be able to pull a lot more business in there.
Thank you. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
All right, so Carmen, did you add anything else to it?
No, Mayor, just the suggested action is listed on the slide, so we're requesting the authorization of the mayor to execute an agreement with Command Performance to conduct wedding and special event management services at the Camarillo Ranch for a three-year term with one additional two-year optional extension.
I'll so move.
There's a motion to a second. I might add that we've had several studies on this. We've had several discussions on this. It's been going on for several months, so we've had a lot of background on this and a lot of discussions in various ways. So with that, we've got a motion to a second. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a comment and then a question.
Why don't you go ahead?
And the question is...
Why don't you turn your microphone on, yeah?
Why don't I turn the microphone on? Carmen, in the staff report, and I just want to highlight this, it does indicate that you anticipate a proposed lease agreement being brought to us at our next regular meeting of October 23, correct? And we are anticipating at this point, we expect that the focus of the CRF is going to be on the historical and cultural and educational aspects of the ranch. to be on the historical and cultural and educational aspects of the ranch.
That's correct, and through the ad hoc committees, or the two committees meeting, our discussions have led up to that. So that is clear on both sides, that that is the new model, that's the expectation for the Camrio Ranch Foundation, is to really focus on the nonprofit aspect of what they do and the cultural, educational aspect of it.
With everyone recognizing the importance of the docents.
That's right.
While at the same time, from an event management standpoint, we have Command Performance.
That's correct.
I just wanted to, just before we vote, I just wanted to quickly compliment both Sean and Charlotte. Both of you have spent, I don't even know how many hours, but each of you have spent, and I really appreciate it. It's been way above and beyond the call of duty, and I want to compliment you, Carmen, and Jeannie, and Brian, and other staff, because there is a lot of work attendant to bringing this forward. I feel very comfortable with having, with hiring Command Performance to move forward. So anyway, that's it for my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, may I add one or two quick comments?
Sure.
I just want to extend thanks and my gratitude to staff in particular. I know this has kind of been outside the realm of the norm, and Carmen, you particularly, Jeannie, you as well, Brian, you've just, I think, I feel like you've just been on point. You've really hit it with it being so kind of outside the box, so to speak. I was really, really pleased with how everything kind of progressed, and it was pretty smooth. And I'm ultimately, I'm really satisfied and happy with this result in that this is going to help ideally create, and from what, for the initial numbers kind of bear out, a sustainable model to preserve the Camrio Ranch House, that property, this gem, this treasure of our community. And it doesn't just do that, but it ensures that through contracting with a single vendor, we can limit a lot of the wear and tear, that bringing in a whole lot of different contractors, you know, caterers would probably entail and bear on that property. And so bringing in someone who already knows the property, retaining Nikki, someone who already knows the property, knows how to sell the property and manage that property and the events, is key to helping preserve the quality and the historic nature of that property, and it's two individuals who know it intimately. And then on the financial side, to the extent we can remove, hopefully, this as a financial burden to the taxpayer, to where it is fully sustainable. And we don't, we won't need to draw on the general fund again in order to maintain and upkeep this historic ranch house, which for a lot of other communities is, becomes a financial nightmare because they're not in that situation. They're, you know, properties like this create a drain, a financial drain, on some of their general fund. So to the extent that we can eliminate that as a taxpayer burden and make it fully self-sustainable while, in parallel, maintain that property and make sure it gets the exact attention and upkeep and care that it needs is key. And I think that we've achieved that with this model, and I appreciate your work. Charlotte, I appreciate the work and time that you've put into this as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good comments. There's a motion, there's a second. Any further discussion, please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the subcommittee members to Sean and Charlotte for all their hard work on this, really appreciate your time on this. So with that, I think we do have to finish up our study session, and is there a need for the closed session as well? Okay, so with that, we will recess.